Welcome to the May 30th meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. This is a continuation of the April 18th meeting where we were discussing mixed use and housing issues, and particularly some specific ordinances. And at that meeting, we asked staff to look into a few things. But as the public comment for this meeting was closed at the April 18th, so we're going to continue with discussion and making recommendations on some of these ordinance, possible ordinance changes. So with that, I understand you have a little bit to tell us about what you've looked into based on our questions.
Okay. So I don't have a formal presentation, but what I've done is we've got recommendations four, five, and six to go through this evening. Recommendation five happens to be in five parts. So we'll just kind of go through essentially what we have in the PowerPoint is what you have in your memo. So the recommendation four is to address ADU standards. Based on the study sessions that we've had with planning commission and then when we put together staff recommendations or the planning commission recommendations, what you see before you in the accessory dwelling units addresses minimum lot size, which the discussion at that point in time was to remove the minimum lot size and allow ADUs on, in all the R districts in Lakewood. And then increase the allowable size for an ADU. Right now, there is a 700 square foot restriction. And essentially, the way the proposed amendment would read would be you could have a maximum of 700 square feet or 40% of the gross floor area of the structure, whichever is greater. That's recommendation four before you.
Okay. You want us to discuss that and then we'll get into the other one? Anybody have any questions or comments on this item? Can... Oh, there it is. Somebody voted, okay. Is this working?
I believe I need to call roll first.
Okay.
Commissioner Hollander?
Here.
Commissioner Sinks?
Here.
Commissioner Eadie?
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Sukowski?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. So anybody want to discuss this any further?
I just, in trying to think this through, we haven't had a lot of applications for any kind of ADUs at this point, have we? If I recall that discussion from last time. And the biggest, big impediment is that ADUs require a separate water meter in most of our water districts, and that runs up the cost. But I'm wondering if there are any other unintended consequences that might occur, like in R1-6, for example, where backyards might get crowded. I guess experience doesn't bear that out.
Based on what we've seen from demand and then the cost of constructing these, I don't think you're going to see a run on ADUs in Lakewood in the R1-6. They still have to meet setbacks, so they're actually meeting setbacks for primary structures. So they have larger setbacks than, say, an accessory structure or a garage that you may put in the backyard. And then they still, the provisions in the R districts about lot coverage and open space still apply as well. And then with the maximum square footage or the 40% of the structure, I mean, you can have the primary house take up a very large part of the lot as well. So I don't see any unintended consequences by making these two changes to the accessory dwelling standards.
Okay. That's my question.
Requirements on setbacks and maximum coverage and those type of ordinance, I mean, those type of restrictions will control what goes into the smaller lots. I think they would come into play a lot more in the smaller lots, so that you couldn't have that much of a structure, I would think. Is that true?
Yes. As I mentioned, you still have the setbacks, you have the height limitations, and then you have lot coverage as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
Are we going to do these one?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept recommendation four as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
So any discussion before we vote? I think this is something that we had discussed and we're expecting this. I think it's a good idea. I question the timing of it because this is a sensitive area in some parts of the city, and I don't see any urgency to do this, but I've said that before. That's not going to be reason for me to vote no, though.
I think the timing is really good, given the dearth of homes, housing available, and having family member live in an accessory dwelling unit or something. I think that might solve some problems, especially financially.
Any other comments before we vote?
I have a question for staff, actually. Just out of curiosity, I know we've already made the motion, but we've been hearing a lot about housing units near the university. And those are actually R2, and ADUs are only allowed in R1 areas. Is that right?
They would be allowed in the R district, so they would be R1 and R2. Yes, they would. It would apply to essentially the R district, so the R143 down to and through the RMF, anywhere where we would allow a single-family home or duplex. Typically, we're moving the lot size limitation, but duplexes are on smaller lots as well.
Okay. That's true. I think in that particular situation, they are smaller. I was curious about that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any more comments before we vote? Well, then let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. So let's talk about recommendation five, mixed use.
So recommendation five is actually A through E, and then we were going to ask that you discuss each one as we move through. So you would start with A and work through until we get to E. And they're all related to mixed use. In this particular recommendation, we were looking at clarifying the language for mixed use descriptions. And so this is kind of the introductory paragraph that leads you into the different mixed use, the mixed use neighborhood, the mixed use employment, general urban core, and the mixed use residential. So this intent statement, you can see what's underlined, would be added to the existing intent statement. If you look towards the bottom of the slide there or your memo, you can see the general intent is that statement that currently leads you into the mixed use. So this adds a little bit more what a mixed use district is, what kind of land uses it's providing, and what we're looking at to do promote with mixed use districts, sustainability, alternative transportation forms. And so that's the proposal before you this evening for recommendation five A.
You want to take these one at a time, too?
Yes.
Sir, are there any questions on this or somebody want to make a motion? We're just looking at A.
Okay. Oh, I'm looking at, getting ahead of it here.
I have a question on A. So it says, enable a range of land uses, including three, residential, commercial, and industrial. Are there other land uses besides that that would fit in the mixed use?
It depends on how you classify all those. If you wanted to look at institutional uses separately, we could add the term institutional, and I think that would cover it. Commercial is a broad range. When, you know, I catch myself a lot of times mentioning retail uses. Retail is one type of commercial use. You have, you know, galleries is something, and studios you may see, and that's a commercial use. So it's like a subcategory. Personal service, hair salons, dry cleaners, barbers, things like that. So yes, if you would like to add the term institutional, so residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial uses, that would be fitting.
So institutional would be anything from assisted living to schools to...
Those we would either, so the residential living would look at residential or commercial category. So schools, libraries, museums, police substations, things like that are institutional uses. Hospital.
You can include that in the motion so that we don't have to worry about addendums if that's where you're going with this. No other questions or somebody want to make a motion?
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. The last sentence that reads, "These statements are descriptive only in nature and do not regulate the use of land or buildings within each district." Does it make sense to incorporate by reference where one would go for those regulations? Or is it implied that, you know, a person reading this text would know where to go for that?
That's a good, good point.
You wouldn't refer them to one article. So the way the zoning ordinance is set up is Article One sets out your policies and procedures and so forth, or your, how you administer the ordinance. Article Two is procedure, so rezoning, special use, how all that works. Number three is your zone districts. So we tell you what those zone districts are and what they're intended to do, but it's not a regulatory function. It's more of a narrative. Article Four is where your uses come in. So all the land uses for mixed use, you're going to find in table 1741. Article Five, then you go to dimensions and development standards. Article Six addresses design for residential. Article Seven is everything else, commercial and institution. I'll stop boring you, but so that's how it's laid out. So if you want to refer to the regulations, you could say throughout the, we could add some kind of statement throughout the zoning ordinance, but it wouldn't be to one specific place. You'd have to look in multiple places.
Well, these statements are talking about uses, aren't they? And so the uses would be in...
Article Four.
Yeah.
So you could, we could specifically, "These statements are descriptive, do not regulate use within each district. Use regulations are found in Article Four."
I think that would be good.
Isn't this the, this description and the use of the tables rather than following this description, isn't that the, wasn't that the focus of the really long discussion that we had with, when we were visiting the city council during a study session? Okay. Painfully long, silly thing. Yes. Sorry about the commentary, but yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. So then we're saying, this is only a description. You don't have to spend an hour arguing about it, wasting people's time. Okay. Good.
Yeah, I did. One of the, I think, overall objectives of mixed use, and I may, this is my view, that mixed use concept overall is getting people to live closer to where they're employed. Now, this, I may be overthinking this, but I see this as an objective, one of the objectives, because people won't be using their cars as much if this object is really achieved. But in our experience so far, has it really resulted in that? I see an awful lot of people still driving to their employment. And you don't mention cars. You mention walking and cycling. I'm saying you, obviously. This draft doesn't. But I, have you, what has experience taught us so far?
So we are, that's difficult to evaluate. When we went, so I'll kind of use the parking data that we have. What we're finding with the residential developments that are being located in the mixed use district near the light rail station, the trip generation that was, that you would typically predict, those trips aren't happening. People have less cars. When we did counts, approximately 20% of what you would find vehicles occupied the garage, so people weren't out. So they're either working from home or they took another form of transportation to employment. So we are finding, yes, that you're getting people, if they're not working where they're at, at least they're in a location where they can take an alternative mode of transportation to get where they're employed. We'd have to do some type of survey to see if they're actually working in the neighborhood where they live. But you are correct, people are still using autos to get to and from places of employment. But it is changing. At least that's what we're finding.
Okay. I believe it'll never go away, but it'll, it doesn't need to go away completely to solve a lot of the transportation problems. It just, we just need enough of it. Every car you take off the transportation system is a plus. So is there a motion? And if so, you want to include those two items that were discussed? Adding institutional and adding a reference to...
Article Four.
Article Four on the uses.
I move that we adopt recommendation number five, Article A, clarifying the mixed use description language with the inclusion of institutional as one of the land uses, and also at the end, putting a reference to Article Four.
There a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, and second is your discussion.
I have a general comment. I think the mixed use district is the, should maybe be renamed the misunderstood district. I agree with Commissioner Cohen that the intention's to reduce the amount of commuting to jobs, but also to businesses that we frequent and restaurants and that sort of thing, but as well as provide places for people to recreate near their homes. I like that. I think it's a valuable district. It's, I'd say we're in a period of transition, whereas we have some leftover zones and specific properties where we've had comments about these, these particular, or this particular part of the zoning code that, I mean, of the code, that they're, I guess they're isolated, though, I would say. And I think overall, and looking forward in some of the projects that we have seen being built, they have been accomplishing the goals, which is all of the things we've mentioned, less, something near public transportation, something that reduces carbon emissions from automobiles and increases bicycling, all the positive things that we're looking for. I would hate to see the, all of this thrown out just because of a couple of specific properties that people don't agree with. We've had a long process, gotten lots of input from numerous citizens and other people, and I, that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? Recommendation five A passes. Let's move on to five B.
Recommendation five B. So this is in Article 1734 as well. And then we're actually getting into talking or describing the mixed use employment district specifically. And there are just three changes that staff has proposed based on some, the discussion and the dialogue process. So one of the things, as Commissioner Miller alluded to, the misunderstood district, ancillary retail, a lot of people have focused on that, that it is, the focus of the mixed use district is office and campus employment, and then there, anything else is kind of secondary to that type of use. What we were looking at with, and we started talking to a little bit, is all the mixed use districts allow for different uses and mixes of uses, different percentages. And so we're looking to clarify that, so we would remove the term ancillary. And then instead of referring to a buffer, most of the zoning ordinance talks to transition areas, and so just for clarification, the term buffer would change to transitionary to be consistent with the rest of the code.
Any questions or discussion? We're talking about the description part now. We're going to get into some changes to the portion that actually changes some of the, some of the requirements and a couple of these coming up, so any, go ahead.
I have one question. So the mixed use employment is the, is the use for a property that we've heard a fair amount about on Green Mountain, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Are there other, other properties with a similar zoning and a kind of similar situation near a lot of single-family housing?
Specifically, any of the ones on Union and mixed use employment?
There are several along Union that are mixed use employment.
Where they're doing 100% residential.
I would need to go back and look. The one that everybody comments on that they don't care for, the Beacon 365 or 85, that one was a G, I believe it was MGU. The one across the street, the 35 Van Gordon, I can't remember if it was an E or a G. I would need to look that up. But not only Union corridor, but we have in different areas, kind of northeast Lakewood, I think we've had some mixed use employment designations where they've done residential, just not in the Ward Four.
And I'm asking about those, the specific properties, or that the criticism, I think, of that particular one was that it wasn't really transitioning from, from single-family residential to a higher density area. It was sort of plopped in the middle, but so are there other properties that are in that kind of, in that situation?
There are, and they're not limited to the mixed use employment. As you move up the major corridors, Wadsworth, Kipling, Garrison, Sheridan, and then East-West, you know, you would get off of Colfax and go down to, say, 14th or 16th. You, the commercial zoning or the mixed use zoning goes north and south for a block or two, and then you start getting into established neighborhoods. So yes, you're going to have a lot of commercial areas or existing areas where they abut a single-family residential area. In fact, the one I can bring up specifically, or the two, the two special use permits that came before the planning commission for the mini storage, the one at Garrison and Colfax, there actually was a street that separated that particular development from the residential to the south. The one further down, just east of Kipling, there was a single-family residential adjacent to that one. And so what they did is they pulled the building back, they did their water quality detention, some landscaping, and the drive island parking area, so they were able to provide 75, 80 feet of separation to that, that neighborhood. And you did have some residents from that neighborhood come and talk and voice some of their concerns, which I think we addressed. But those are two examples where you do have commercial transitioning to a single-family neighborhood. So it's not, the one on Greaton Mountain is not unique in that aspect.
In other ways, it seems like it is. Those don't seem the same to me somehow, when I...
Okay.
To me, because of the frontage on Colfax for those other ones. It seems like that's what you would want there, is that transitioning from residential to the Colfax frontage with something like a mixed use. I guess I'm, what I'm thinking about is that we've talked about a few times, the idea of not creating ordinances that satisfy one problem or solve one problem, especially if it's already passed, like a parking in a restaurant or zoning at a place where the zoning is already accepted. But if there's something that we might do in this particular section of the mixed use code, or recommendation that we would make that would ensure more, more mixed use and less, not so much single use, I think that would be, that would be useful, if we have any thoughts about that. be, that would be useful if we have any thoughts about that.
Um, I do have, but I think, I think mine are more appropriate, um, in the, in D and E. Cause that's where you talk about percentages and, and, and requiring mixed, mixed use. So I, the definition, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with unless you want to put something in here that...
My, my question, just not sorry to interrupt. Since we're planning on changing some of the, the information in the table, to me, the ancillary should stay in the definition.
Well, ancillary is what caused a lot of, uh, grief and question, um...
But we're changing the table to match that now.
And does it say ancillary?
Well, the table would be saying that residential could not be a main use. I don't know about retail, um, but, but the change that we had proposed to the table was to make that as a second use. So the way I, like when we were originally talking about changing this definition, we took out ancillary because those were allowed uses. But since we're changing the table to not have them be primary uses anymore, to me, the ancillary should stay in now.
Well, I think, I think residential's not a, a primary use in, in employ, mixed-use employment.
It'd be ancillary.
But we already voted on that one. We're looking at C, correct?
Mm-mm.
Oh, we're still on B?
Still on B.
Uh, my mind is going ahead. Okay. If we haven't, if we haven't voted on that yet, uh...
And, and we're still in discussion. We, we don't have a motion on B.
No.
Okay.
I'm actually not, I don't have a problem with ancillary, I think.
Yeah.
And it sure stirred up a lot of, probably because it's, it's not a very, it's not specific enough, I would think.
I, I think part of the reason we were talking about getting rid of this was from discussion that we had in the planning commission.
Well, I, I meant to say, if I said that right, I don't have a, a problem getting rid of it because I didn't seem to really add anything, but...
But you don't have a problem keeping it in either.
Oh, no, I don't, I think we should not keep it in.
Should not.
Yeah. Cause I, I don't think it adds, um, clarity.
Thank you for the clarification.
Clarification of that, of your muddled statement.
So...
See, I think, I think we, we've amended the table though to make residential and ancillary use, so therefore the ancillary should stay in the definition. I don't know about retail though.
I, I think, I think some of the problems came up is what, what does ancillary, ancillary mean? Um, it's, it's not a... Excuse me, public comment is finished.
And ancillary only refers to retail, not to residential. It's just describing retail, is that correct?
No, re, ancillary, retail and residential uses. I have no problem taking it out and I have no problem leaving it in. Does staff want to weigh in? Is there, I, I, I think you did this based on our, our recommendation to you, correct?
Yeah, and, and I, I think you've solved the largest problem in the previous step by declaring these are descriptive statements, so I don't know that it matters.
And actually, we've already had the discussion about the, uh, the fact that this is a d, a definition or a description rather and not, uh, not what actually is the code, cause that's in the tables, correct?
Right. So, I mean, I, I think we've had the discussion. I don't have a problem if council wants to change their mind on this. I guess one of us has a problem with it, depends on how many of us have a problem with it. And, uh, one way we can, uh, resolve that is to, uh...
We've heard a lot about mixed-use employment and, uh, I think including ancillary is actually fairly important to me, um, just to, to, to specifically state in the definition that retail and residential are not primary uses in that zone. Even though it's not anything binding, it's more of a correctly defining what this says. And then we have the, the table to match it now.
So does somebody want to make a motion either with or without that change? No one wants to make a motion?
I guess I'll just add a comment that I'm not hearing a good rebuttal to Commissioner Sokowsky's suggestion to include ancillary. Um, I understand that these are descriptive, but intent's important, um, from some of the feedback we've heard. I know we discussed this in a, um, in our study sessions, but unless other commissioners have a reason to specifically remove it, I think it'd be okay to go ahead and include it.
I mean, the reason I supported it is originally is I thought the term created some confusion. I guess I was convinced in some of the discussion along those lines, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure it would create any confusion, especially with some of the changes that have been, uh, requested, so.
Well, I'll make a motion. Um, I move that we adopt recommendation five B to modify the mixed-use employment district description with the word ancillary remaining.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? If none, let's vote. Now move on to, uh, recommendation five C, which my mind was already in that, uh, I apologize, cause now's where we're starting to get more into the meat of, uh, what we're trying to do. So, any questions on five C? Is there a motion?
Um, here's a comment. I wonder if in order to be, uh, consistent, we added institutional on A. Should institutional be added on C where it lists residential, commercial and industrial? So, I think with consist, for consistency's sake, we also add institutional on C.
Is that a motion?
Well, I can make it. I don't know that we're ready for the motion. Are we ready for the motion or is there more discussion?
This is, this is, uh, just a, a definition that's in the appendix, right? And we're just trying to make it more clear.
More clear.
Yeah. I don't have, I don't have anything else to say.
So the motion's been made, is there a second?
Did you?
Oh, I'll make it. So, um, I move that recommendation five C be adopted with the additional word institutional, uh, included as a description of land uses.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion?
For me.
If there's no discussion, then let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Um, five D, modify, modify use permissions in ME zone.
And, uh, Chair Hollander, there are actually, uh, so D, there are three options. Um, the, so what we were looking at is, um, coming up with some alternatives to require more than one use in the, the mixed-use employment district. So option one, so when you get a multifamily residential project that's thirty thousand square feet or larger, they have to provide ground floor commercial space. Um, and then also associated with that, that residential use, sometimes you have either office uses where you have the, the leasing office and so forth. Um, they may have some fitness space or, or some kind of shared conference room or something. So we're putting a restriction on how much of that area can actually count for the ground floor use. So that's option, option one. Option two, um, we're looking at, in, instead of using a, a building size, we're looking at parcel size. So if you get a development proposal that's ten acres or larger, um, you have a minimum of at least two land uses and the, uh, some type of employment use, um, would have to comprise fifty percent or more of, of those, uh, proposed uses. And then option three, um, not looking at development type at all, but providing some type of incentives, um, to incorporate more than one use into a development project. And what we've, we've looked at is, um, i, i, essentially A would be, uh, an additional story, uh, i.e. height, um, which would allow for more density, reducing parking requirements or, um, fee reductions is, is what we're proposing for incentives that we could offer at this time. And so those are the three options for D requiring, uh, a mix of uses in the employment district.
Okay, um, I'll start off the discussion on this one. Um, your next recommendation, uh, calls for, um, maximum commercial or office space in residential zones. I know there's been a lot of discussion about when, if you require, um, require these types of things in, in, uh, the mixed-use zone, the mixed-use doesn't, I mean, that, if, if you require mixed-use in every building, um, there's a tendency for it not to work that well. I mean, that's, that was a lot of the discussion, but now we're talking about, uh, putting percentages in. I'm not, I'm not saying that's wrong, but where, where are the, uh, where's the switch in, uh...
Are, are you referring to E modifying permissions in the MR district? Is, are you, are you...
Well, I'm referring to, uh, option one.
Okay.
Well, uh, before, before you answer, I, I don't think, uh, unless you have, have looked into this and seen examples, um, my experience with incentivized mixed-use zones, the, it doesn't work. You, you end up still with the single use in most cases. And option two, doesn't, uh, I mean, there's a larger issue on this and, and I, I think a lot of the problem, based on what I've been hearing, um, is, is there's too many zones that, that are, um, either, either one, one lot or, or very small. I, i, it's not something that's conducive to a mix of use unless you do it in one building. And, uh, so I, I question some of the, uh, there, there's, there's two, two things we're trying to do here. And one, there's been problems, um, brought up by a lot of people in the, in the city that, um, you know, we need, we need to fix the, uh, the code. And that's what we're trying to do here. And the second thing is, well, maybe some of these zones aren't, aren't zoned properly. Cause I, I keep running into where we have these small mixed-use zones. I don't know how we can, um, comply with the, uh, or, or not comply, but meet, meet the expectations of, of mixed-use. Having said that, the, um, restrictions you put on, on, uh, mixed-use residential don't give a minimum size of, of building. It just says you can't have more than, um, twenty, or thirty percent of the gross floor area or twenty...
And, and let me, that, so we'll, we'll...
But the, the question is why can't we do that in all the mixed-use zones?
But let me, let me explain E first. So E is, um, um, staff kind of generated. And what we were looking at currently, if you go into the code and you look under the MR district, multifamily residential is a permitted use outright. So is club, lodge and service organization. So is daycare. So is the, the list that you see before you. Now, the mixed-use residential has a limitation because we, we want primarily that district to be residential, that if you choose to do a second use, no more than twenty or thirty percent, depending on where you're at, can be any of those other uses. And so what staff was finding, um, you know, somebody would want to come into an MR district and do a standalone restaurant and they can't do it. You have to have a residential use and then whatever the calculation for your residential use is, you could do twenty or thirty percent, not that you have to do. So the, the residential is, is, um, what we're looking at is if you have a large residential project and you want to do a coffee shop or some kind of, uh, you know, service use, that you could do that. And, and so we're proposing to change those as accessory to clarify. The residential use is, is the permitted use. These other things you can do after you have that residential use. So, so E is a little different where residential is the primary use and that's the only thing you have to do if, if you choose, but if you want a commercial component, you can have one at a limited ratio.
Okay, but using that argument, uh, there, there's been a lot of discussion of mixed-use employment should be primarily employment, so why can't we, we follow that logic and, and put, and, and you, one of the options is to put a, a percentage in, but it, but it, uh, it, uh, limits it to larger, um, multifamily residential projects.
The issue...
Why, why can't it apply, um, to the whole district? And, and I can see why in some of the, some of the districts that are too small. And, and that, that's where, where I'm going back to the other, um, problem I think we have. But, um, in my opinion, we ought to put this in, you know, come up with a percentage in, in all mixed-use districts.
I, I don't think that makes sense. Well, does it? Mixed-use employment has a different primary intention or goal or purpose than from mixed-use residential. That's, um, I...
Is that, is that your, your position?
Now, the, the real issue here is residential can be a primary use. It cannot be or is not ever built as an accessory use within a building. There's no such thing in Lakewood as a primarily office building with a few floors of residential. That, that type of product does not exist.
Well, exactly.
So, whereas in residential, you can say, you can build a residential building and limit the amount of retailer office you can put in it because there is an opportunity to put retailer office in the ground floor of a residential building. The opposite doesn't exist. There is no office building with a ground floor of residential or a top floor of residential, right? So your options are, in the mixed-use employment district are either to prohibit residential outright and just say this isn't a mixed-use, it's just employment. You, that's one option. If you want it to be mixed-use, some of the buildings are going to have to be residential only. And, or resi, or primarily residential with a ground floor of something else. So that's where you get your option. Option one is you tackle it by building and you say where, if you do a residential-only building and it gets above a certain size, you have to have something else in the ground floor. Option two tackles it at the other side way. The, the Alta Green Mountain project was, is a fifteen-acre site where they did a bunch of small residential buildings. None of them would have been over thirty thousand square feet, but we say if you have fifteen acres, at least half of your buildings have to be non-residential. And so they could do half residential and half... And so, they could do half residential and half something else. Those are the two ways to get at mixed-use, in, in, in ways that might limit residential somewhat. The only other option, if you want to limit residential, is just to prohibit it. Because saying 50% of every building can't go, or has, no more than 50% of a building can be residential is an effective prohibition on residential.
Well, that's, that's why I say that, I mean, individual building-wise, it doesn't make sense. But as a district, it should make sense, otherwise, why do we have mixed-use employment? And, and, which is back to my first, first comment, that maybe some of these mixed-use employment zones should not be mixed-use employment, and I'll have, I'll have more to say in that.
We can't actually be changing zoning, though. That's not, that has to come from the, from the property owner. We're talking about what we, what uses we, we are allowed. It seems like we are jumping ahead to E, actually, when, when maybe we should just stay with, with D for a little while, because I really, I'm.
Well, I, I just talked about E, because I, I wanted to know why we couldn't do the same thing in, in mixed-use employment, or mixed-use, any of the mixed-use zones.
I, I do have a question about D, if, if we can, if, if you were done with.
Yeah.
Question about E, okay. So, I kind of like all three options. I was, in particular, the first two. Is there a reason that we can't, that you wrote them as singular options? I mean, where we choose one, rather than, they seem to apply to different situations, and it, it seems like the, the, it would be useful, helpful, since one of the, one of the criticisms, even from me, has been that mixed-use hasn't been mixed-use, and that, I like, what I like about these is that some of the, some of the properties that we've seen being developed, that people were criticizing, might not have been developed in the same way, with, if these, with these rules in place. And I think that's, that's progress. We can't go back and undo what's done, but is, is there a reason that you don't, that we wouldn't want to have, say, option one and two?
Could certainly have both.
I'm sorry?
Could have both.
And just to tag along on that, that's actually my question, too. I was curious if either option one or two was more likely to occur in Lakewood, or why wouldn't we just have both options? I mean, as Commissioner Miller mentioned, they seem like they're two different scenarios that could both potentially occur.
The, the only hesitation I have is, is a property where both apply, and if there's, if then you have a conflicting provision, or if you could meet them both somehow, and I haven't read it with that in mind yet, but I.
You could put something in if, if both conditions apply, either, you know, one of them or the other one dictates, or, you know, is there any, is there any time that they would conflict? Maybe we keep them in, just make sure it doesn't, I don't see where it would conflict. It's just you.
I don't see where.
Certain, certain situations, you know, you, you have to meet both.
We can certainly make that work, if that's your preference, absolutely.
Then I, Paul's brow is furrowed, so he must be thinking. This is, should I wait? You can see the gears churning, Paul.
Make your motion, and we'll discuss.
Well, no, I have another, I have another question for you, then. So, option three, I mean, we, we had talked in our previous meetings about, and, and study sessions about, about incentivizing mixed-use, and it, and so, I, I personally don't like the fact that we have, that we would have to choose that as an option. I, is, I, I wonder why we can't include the option three as well, in, as.
So.
In the ordinance.
You'd have the incentive where options one and two don't apply, or you'd get the incentive even if you have to do it because of option one and two?
Well, the, I guess, my, am I thinking that the point of an incentive is to get people to do these, these mixed-use, or encourage them, rather, to developers, to, to design these mixed-used employment, in this case, mixed-use employment projects. But I, I guess I don't see why, maybe I don't understand your question.
Well, yeah, if, if there's a project in ME that is less than 30,000 square feet of building area, and less than 10 acres, then it still could be all residential, and then that's where, that's where the incentives can kick in. But again, I don't, I don't see that actually happening. But, you know, I have no problem putting it in, but I don't know that it's going to make a lot of difference, and.
Well, the, I think the nature of an incentive is not everyone would take it. Some developers would say, ah, now we'll do it the way we were planning.
So, so if you have, if you have a project less, less than 30,000 square foot in a gross building area, and less than 10 acre, you're okay with that being 100% residential?
I think that's part of what, what Travis was just saying, that there's going to be some buildings that are that way, but having this as an, as a, one, as a part of the, the ordinance, the, the new one, the revised one, the idea of adding, being able to add another 12 feet of height, for instance, one additional story, no more than 12 feet in height, that, that'd be pretty enticing to, to a developer that would, I would think, in most cases, unless.
That, that one might become moot, because by the time you've got a building of that height, that you can add a story above your allowance, you're over 30,000 square feet.
Oh, that's true. Well, and I was, I was actually thinking that, I don't know that taller buildings and reused parking are going to go over all that well, as in, like, to the neighbors.
I, I agree.
Just an observation, right?
I agree.
So, I'm not sure that is something we really want to incentivize too much.
Could I approach this from a somewhat different direction, just to go on Commissioner Hollander's?
Sure.
Thinking. I was, you know, we're talking, we're, I think we're focused on the fact that people are building residential structures in mixed-use employment districts. But I, I want for a moment to flip that idea, as a developer who might want to build an office building, period, because we used to have different, I didn't go back and look at the older ordinances, but we used to actually have districts with principally office designations. At the present time, we have a CR, Commercial Regional Designation, or District designated, so I suppose you could build a pure office building there without any difficulty. But if you come and go to a mixed-use employment district and want to build a pure office building, what would be your impediment then? At the present time, that's possible, isn't it?
Right now, you could build an office building in any of our mixed-use, with the exception of MR.
With any mixed-use?
Yep.
Even, wouldn't have to be employment.
Nope. Office is one of the uses that's allowed under mixed-use.
Under any mixed-use.
Except for residential.
Oh, okay. Mixed-use residential.
It has to be primarily residential.
Well, under the current code, or under what's been?
Under the current code, office is listed as a permitted use, but the, but the subsequent article limits it to 20% of the building.
I was, you know, I was partly reacting to those voices who said they would rather have people looking out of their office windows during the day, rather than from resid, you know, high, high-density residential units at night.
That would have been allowed.
Yeah.
Would have been allowed.
Either, either would be allowed, okay.
Well, I could see if we do even, even adopt an option one and option two, you know, developer might, might come in and just be under these numbers with all residential, and then, but probably financially, that wouldn't make sense for a developer to do that.
I was wondering about the 10 acres on option two, how, how that number came about.
It's, it's a size that would allow for multiple buildings, much smaller than that, and you're going to have one, one building.
Well, I will say that I, about option three, coming back to that, in spite of the, the parking issue, I think that developers are in, are wise to provide enough parking for whatever is the, the use that they're, they're, they're building. And we have seen that some types of businesses require less and others more parking. Some are, are short-term parking, you know, where people come and pick something up and go, and, and others are longer-term, where there's a restaurant where people might spend a few hours. So, I, I actually, I like the idea of the incentives. I was, something I mentioned in our previous meetings, that I think we could, we don't only want to swing a big club, we also want to entice people, developers, to, to build the kind of buildings that, with the sort of uses that we want to see, actual mixed-use. I don't know, is, is a 20% reduction in parking too big? Do you think we should make it smaller? If it were smaller, would someone be, developer be in, and would it still be enticed, or she?
Depends on how small.
We don't want to make it pointless.
Right.
Seems like the fees on, on option three, 50%, that, that could be really substantial.
Yeah, but considering the overall.
Project.
These developments, that.
Maybe it's not, huh?
At all. I mean, I think, I think, you know, talking about incentivizing like this, on the surface sounds really good, but in practice, for many reasons, one was brought out that an additional story, you're already probably going to be under the option one. Reduction in parking requirements, we've had a lot of discussion of problems with parking, and I don't want to go the other way with that. And the reduction in fees really not significant to a developer.
I think, though, that, that, the parking discussions that we've had relate, where there were particular problems, were specific locations around a school, or a, a restaurant that didn't have enough parking, and that, in the study that was done, generally, there is enough parking in, in the buildings that are being built. And, I don't, so I don't think, we, we've had, there's been a lot of attention drawn to parking and focus on, on that, and we spent quite a bit of time on it, and realized that we can't go back and, and fix a problem that was already there. But we, in some of the other recommendations that we're making, we are, are solving that by increasing the required number of, of spaces per, per thousand square feet, I think it is, of, of restaurant, for instance. I think in these, in this mixed-use employment zone, reducing parking by 20%, like I say, a developer may not even want to do that part, because they may feel they need to have the parking for the, for whoever would be their, their tenants and, and customers of the businesses that might be there. I mean, I, I don't imagine developers are going to be, just to reach, or to take advantage of this incentive, they would build a, design a building and a structure that would not be attractive to potential occupants. I will say that when I built, my wife and I built our solar house, the city gave us a reduction in, in some permits, and, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it makes a difference.
Well, to a resident, it's a lot of money. I'm talking about a developer that doing multifamily, or, or office, or whatever. The cost of those projects are so high that the fee reduction really wouldn't have an effect.
Even impact fees? Maybe we should ask about what are some of the, what would be some of those fees that, that a developer might see that's building something under 30,000 square feet, under less than 10 acres?
So, at 30,000 square feet, if you just use it in totality at $2 a square foot, which is what we're proposing, the, the new school land fees, that's $60,000. The parkland fee, we're, we're still looking at, it's based on fair market value, so we're, we're trying to come up with what that fee, but that kind of gives you an idea, you know, just using the number and the example here, of what a, what a school and dedication fee might be under the new proposal.
Okay. So, it's, it's a fair amount of money, I would think. It also, I think, gives us the, Lakewood, the chance to not appear to be unfriendly toward developers. I think sometimes we, we have that reputation. That's what I hear.
I wonder.
By that, I don't mean that we're just trying to get all developers. I mean that we are trying to get the kind of development that we want, because if we, if, the, the problem and the criticism has been that we're not getting some of the kind of development that we want. We want to get people here, who want to be here, who will take advantage of our, what we're willing to offer, and then show them we're more, more friendly to someone who wants to do the sorts of things that we want to do.
I wonder where option three would fit, because I liked earlier where we said we would combine options one and two, so option one by building, option two by acreage, and so if we combine those, would option three then still, what, what are you thinking? Are you thinking would take precedence over the combined option one and two, or instead of option one and two? What are you thinking there?
I think that it would be the case where, when neither option one nor option two applies. So, if it's a building smaller than 30,000 square feet, or if it's a, a development with less than 10 acres, so someone that could then, who would not be required to include two uses, would through option three be incentivized to include two uses or more, correct? Is that how it would, how it would be used? It wouldn't, it wouldn't give all of these incentives to someone within, building one of those larger developments. That's how I would understand it. Is that right? Okay.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I just wanted a little clarification, so, we're adjusting these, and those are, these are tied to the, the use table, right? So, we would have the limited uses for those, or are they not tied to those at all?
The use tables would refer to this section, correct?
Yes, they would, and, but, but this, this language would be in Article Five, where we have restrictions on certain uses in mixed-use zones.
Could I just inquire about, this has probably been answered before, but just to refresh my recollection, the 10 acres, what's the magic about 10 acres?
No magic. It could be eight, it could be 12. It's, it's a size that would generally allow for more than one large building.
Okay.
Will you give us an example of a 10-acre site?
The, the one that's causing so much trouble in, in Green Mountain is a 15-acre site.
Okay.
How many acres are some of these along Union?
The ones with one building? I don't know. The Beacon is probably five or six. Okay, so the Beacon might be five acres.
How many square feet is that building?
200 and some units, so.
Yeah, I, I can't give you square feet, but, so the, the Beacon, I think it was 368, and then the one across the street, Van Gordon, was a much larger site, because they had a lot of topography. I think it was closer to, to 10 acres, and it was only 10 acres. I think it was closer to 10 acres and it was only 253 units. So that kind of gives you an idea of those two sites.
300 units, even if they were...
If you figured, so, let's go 300 units, roughly 1,000 square feet, that's a 300,000-square-foot building.
10 times this 30,000 square. So by including these, we would actually be, we wouldn't be allowing that, those developments as they are.
They'd have to have a commercial component.
That seems like what, that's what our goal is, so. And for the smaller ones, I, like I say, I'm still an advocate of incentivizing people to, developers to bring the kind of projects here that we want to see. And if they get a little bit back from us, that seems fair-minded.
I suppose it's just as well that we note that developers have not been a big part of this dialogue. I think we've had only a couple of comments from the development community. And I'm disappointed in that, really, I would like to see more participation.
Someone want to make a motion, if nobody's got anything else to say?
I've rewritten some things to combine options one and two, to make it one option. And then I've written for the incentivized. So, do you want to hear it first, or should I just make the motion?
I think read it.
Whatever you would like to do.
Okay, might as well cut to the chase, and I'd like to move that parentheses here. So I'm going by what you said, that option one is by building, and option two is multiple buildings. Okay, so I kind of glommed onto that. Okay, so here I go again.
Before you make your motion, can I ask a point, something about clarification?
Sure.
So, are you thinking, rather than having an acreage, that you would define it as, by the number of buildings?
No, I, let me just read it first.
That's fine.
I'll do it that way, I'll pause. So, "When a building is greater than 30,000 square feet, ground floor commercial space shall be provided." And then number two on option one would also, I haven't rewritten that. And, "And when 10 acres or larger, when multiple buildings are on 10 acres or larger, then there is a requirement to have a minimum of two land uses," and number two also. So, just combine that. Did that, I kind of mumbled through that, should I say that again? I see some...
What, would a motion, would a motion request that we incorporate options one and two, or options one, two, and three, would that be clear enough?
Okay, okay, good.
Unless there's a specific thing you want to add into it, you should do that.
Okay, and, well, so then, option three, "When a building is less than 30,000 square feet, or multiple buildings are on less than, sorry, on more, on 10 acres or more, then incentives may be utilized."
Well, yeah, but I don't even know that you need to say that. You just say, "Options one, two, and three," and then automatically the...
They'll words...
They'll apply, they'll apply where they need to apply.
Oh, right then, good. So you get the idea. So, I would like to make a motion that we combine options one and two, and then also add option three.
A second.
Discussion?
Well, I, my comment is that I like this, these, including all of these, because we would, going forward, we will not allow the kind of building that has, for which we've received the greatest criticism. And also, we will perhaps induce some developers to take advantage of the incentives and build some more of the kind of developments that we want to see on even smaller lots. I like these ideas, so it would be an improvement to this, to the ME zone ordinance.
Let me just ask staff if this falls within the parameters of what the development community can build around? If we were to pass this, would this make life too complicated for them, more complicated? Could they reasonably build around these parameters?
Reasonably, I think, I think option two is gonna drive people away. Generally, developers build either, focus either on commercial or on residential. And so finding a developer to say, "You have to build both on your lot, you have to build a commercial building and a residential building," is gonna cut down severely, but it's feasible.
I have no problem with that, because maybe we need to wait for the developer that builds what we want to be built in that. Getting back to my size issue, the one project we've been talking about, mixed-use employment, the development took up the whole mixed-use zone, correct? Or are there pieces left? The development is 15 acres, you said, is the whole mixed-use zone 15 acres, or is there more?
Mixed-use zone goes on up Alameda.
Is there more property in that mixed-use zone, other than what's being developed on now?
I think the property to the north is mixed-use general, but there's a lot, the mixed-use zoning continues all the way up Alameda and up Union.
Yeah, but that's a whole, whole separate zone. I'm talking about the mixed-use employment. Mixed-use employment's the one that seems to be causing all the problems. So, this is one, one development within the mixed-use employment zone. And there's no other property within that mixed-use zone, mixed-use employment zone.
Adjacent to that property?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Are there, are there any mixed-use employment zones with less than 15 acres in the city?
Yes.
Are there any mixed-use employment zones less than 10,000?
1,000 square feet?
10,000, or not 10, 10, no, 10 acres. Okay. My only, my only comment is even if we institute these, they're still gonna be mixed-use zones where they're gonna be 100% residential. And that's okay, if that's what we want in those zones, but that doesn't meet the intent of mixed-use employment.
Keep in mind that prior to 2012, these were commercial-only zones. So as of right now, except for those few locations that we have new apartment buildings, they're 100% commercial. So they're not mixed-use now. The only way to get them mixed-use is dad residential.
You're saying the, this being 100% residential will make the area more mixed-use?
By definition, all of these mixed-use zones, except the MR zone, were commercial-only prior to 2012. So, except for buildings that have been built in the last five years, they remain commercial-only. The missing use in these mixed-use zones is residential.
Any other discussion before we vote?
I think that's a good point.
I'm gonna be supporting the motion, but I think it only solves part of the problem. And I still don't think the incentive is practical. I have no problem putting it in, but I don't think it's practical. Motion passes unanimously. Now let's look at...
So we are recommend, ready for amendment five E, and I apologize, I forgot my E up in the first statement up there. So this, I mentioned earlier, is staff-generated. And what we're looking at, the mixed-use residential, the zone district requires residential use. It's, and then it allows for, and I've actually opened the chapter that we're talking about, it allows for other types of uses to be incorporated into the, if you have a residential building. So, the difference between the 20 and 30%, if you are along an arterial street, you can do 30% of your ground floor, your gross square footage of the development as something other than the residential use. And then if you're on a collector, and so arterials are Wadsworth, Colfax, Kipling, and then it says, essentially, all other streets, collectors and locals, you can do 20% of your development as another use other than residential. And so, to clarify that statement, right now, all those uses before you on this slide are listed as Ps in the use chart, and we're proposing that they go to A, because they have to be accessory to a residential use. And then, the second piece to that is, and Commissioner Solkelsky had this question, so the previous amendment, the proposed changes would go in this section in article five. And so, we're proposing specifically, we mentioned commercial and office uses, there are more to that, i.e. the institutional uses, just changing that terminology, so essentially all non-residential uses would have to comply with those standards. So that's the proposal for amendment E this evening, five E.
Any questions?
I have one. Following along the same line of thinking that we're trying to make our mixed-use zones actual mixed-use areas, is there a reason to, in number one, where we are saying that all buildings located adjacent to an arterial street may contain, may contain leasable non-residential space on the ground floor? If we're really going for mixed-use, should that say must, rather than may? I mean, or would that, where would that, where would that cause a problem?
There are, there are... Excuse me, there are streets where retail and commercial uses on the ground floor will be successful, and there are streets where it won't. So, it's very contextual, and so requiring it in every building, if this is a building back in a neighborhood where there's not foot traffic to support that ground floor commercial use, then it doesn't make sense to require it.
And, I, go ahead.
Oh, no, please.
I just have a certain amount of unease in reading that the whole metro area is overbuilt for retail space, which, you know, are they, are we really gonna be able to find tenants if we make this a big requirement?
I wonder whether some of the same criteria as our options one and two should be included for this one, in the mixed-use residential for larger developments? If it makes sense then. Then we don't have the situation that we have in other places where it's all residential and there is no business, even where there ought to be commercial.
Another thing to think about, well, go ahead if you have a question.
It's just difficult to do that by size in the way that we did it with employment, because it's really a location issue for where commercial uses can be successful. So it's hard for us to make a general rule that it should be provided. And Commissioner Cohen's right, the city currently has too much retail, I mean, the whole region does. This is a region been built on sales tax, and so it's overzoned and overbuilt for retail region-wide.
Well, my comment was, that's today. We're supposed to plan for, I mean, there's valuable little space within the city, if you're saying ultimately, in the foreseeable future, it's gonna be that way, that's one thing, but...
In the foreseeable future, retail is gonna decrease. We're going more to an internet ordering society.
Just like in the 1890s when we went to mail order.
You don't remember that?
Parcel post where it was introduced.
And you were what age at that?
Just a point of clarification, on numbers one and two, you took out commercial and/or office and put in non-residential. But, on number one, second sentence, it says, however, the amount of commercial and/or office space, so it seems like you ought to put in non-residential there.
We would recommend that change.
Okay, thank you.
Coming back to, I'm sure to your chagrin, my earlier comment about residential, I agree that there are places where there's too much commercial, but we also have places where there's not enough. You know, some of the residential areas, Green Mountain, south towards Morrison Road, west to C-470, there's nearly no commercial, even of the kind that people would use, small retail shops or small service shops, that sort of thing. And so I'm, it's, I balk at not including something, whether it's, even if it would be an incentive, maybe the same sorts of incentives that we provided in the mixed-use employment area. Maybe you would help if you tell us where some of these, where are some of the MR zones currently?
So, the MR district used to be, under the old zoning code, they were designated 5R. So, under the pre-2012 zoning ordinance, those 5R locations, or that 5R district was multifamily residential. That's, that was the zoning designation. However, it was interesting, because the zoning code hadn't been updated in about 30 years, and I'm not sure where this little provision came from, they did allow for some commercial uses in that, the 5R was the highest residential zoning district. These 5R locations, they'd be difficult to support commercial, there's probably somewhere in there that somebody can point out and say, "You could do commercial at this location." But they're further embedded in the neighborhoods, they're not along the commercial corridors, the collector's streets, they're actually further into the neighborhood. And so, they're either budding other multifamily residential uses or single-family uses in most locations. So they're not in the highest and most desirable retail locations in the city of Lakewood, to answer your question. The incentive was a carryover, and from the previous code. The, the incentive was a carryover, we've, and from the, from the previous code, essentially.
So, these are mixed-use residential zones that probably wouldn't, will never have anything other than residential, is what you're saying?
Most likely, but as I said, there, there could be a location or two where you'll, you'll see somebody take advantage of this option.
And all the stuff along major corridors, along Colfax, along Wadsworth was zoned, mixed-use general, uh, to allow for more commercial. And these are maybe a block off.
Thank you.
Not hearing any other questions. Is there a motion?
Sure.
I have a question first. So, should the non-residential, should we add that as we make a motion? Or you'll just wordsmith it to make it consistent? Okay. You can say it. You can say it.
Be included in the motion.
The, to include non-residential is, is, is written here?
Yes, on, uh, the second sentence on one, take out commercial and/or office and put in non-residential.
To be consistent with the other sections.
Oh, I see. You're right. I see where you're, yes. Great. So, the, um, I move that we, um, ad- uh, adopt, um, what are we, number four E, uh, to modify use permissions in the, in the MR zone, um, with one, uh, minor change to the, uh, what was presented, and that's it, following however, the amount of commercial and/or office space, we change that to non-residential.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I, I, did you say four, uh, recommendation four, but it's five, recommendation five? Anyway, I, I...
I did say, I did say four.
Okay, so...
Can I, can I... Friendly amendment to change it to five. I'm sure the secondor would agree.
Yes.
Then I shall do so. I'd like to amend my amendment to, to make it correct.
If there's no further discussion, are we ready to vote? Motion passes unanimously. Recommendation six.
So, recommendation six is, um, we had quite a bit of discussion about revolving around the mixed use and determining an area where we could look at kind of evaluating percentages of mixed use. Um, we've even talked about, uh, the design review committee and, and how that works. And, um, we've heard from Conference of Planning about targeting the Union Corridor and then starting the process to develop a complete neighborhood plan. And as summarized, I won't read all the bullets, but that's what a recommendation six is, is to recommend that council, um, adopt this recommendation and have staff start that process to kind of develop that, uh, complete neighborhood plan.
Are any questions?
I just have one. Would you mind, um, telling us more about the complete neighborhood plan for anybody that might not be familiar with it?
And...
And we have, we have one already in, in the city.
And I'm actually going to ask Roger Wadnall to come down and, uh, address that question for you, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, your question was on to describe the com- complete neighborhood.
Yes.
Process. Yeah, that, the complete neighborhood, and it's outlined in an earlier memo, I don't, in the April fourth memo. But, but that's, um, a process really was, uh, probably originated in Portland and, um, Seattle to look at kind of all aspects of a neighborhood, uh, walkability, uh, access to local services, access to parks. And it's, it has a, a general description. We actually, um, utilized that concept in the Sheridan, um, neighborhood when it was Sustainable Communities Initiative grant, where we looked at all of that, it's ac- access to employment. And that was very specific to that neighborhood and to that part of town, as I maybe mentioned at an earlier study session, where they have, um, significant affordability issues, the population's, is quite a bit different than the population that we would likely be looking at in Union. So, although a lot of the, the process is transferable, the results based on the neighborhood would be much different. So, does that kind of give you an overview?
No, I, I think that helps.
Okay.
It was a, that was an award-winning project, is that right?
It was a Dr. Cog Award-winning project, yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen the booklets that have been produced, and so do you anticipate another publication for this, um, Union Boulevard neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, the process would, the process would be the same, the results obviously would be specific to that neighborhood, but...
Right.
It would come, it would look, um, similar.
And how much time, or what's the timeframe that you envision?
I think we would be looking at nine months to a year, uh, once we got started.
Would, uh, we be asking City Council to in- invest money in this? Because we wouldn't have a grant like they did for Sheridan, correct?
Yeah, there was a grant for Sheridan. I'm thinking, we're looking at, you, my understanding, utilize our existing staff in, in Conference of Planning to do this, to do the work.
Because they don't have enough to do.
Yeah, um, I'll just leave that. We certainly...
I'm being facetious.
...the work plan with a little bit of advance notice.
I'm being facetious. They're working hard, and, and I think Johan has mentioned more than once that we should have more staff. Thank you.
With this, uh, looking at recommendation of mixed, mixture of uses and looking at a range of zoning mechanisms, will that possibly look into the mixed-use zone and the appropriateness of those mixed-use zones? Is that all part of it?
That's the intent of this. I mean, the, the whole process to make these changes, the ME has kind of been rushed. We have, I mean, we haven't looked at a single ME parcel of, of what the impacts would be, right? And that's, that's the intent of this, is to do this more thoroughly.
And, uh, I know changing a zone legislatively is not something to take lightly, but I think, I mean, it can be done. And I think we need to seriously look at that. Can you take down the, uh, votes and then, is there a, uh, motion on this?
I'd make a motion on this. I move that we, um, adopt for recommendation to City Council, recommendation number six, adopt proposal to begin a complete neighborhood plan for the Union Boulevard neighborhood, as written.
And I'll second. Discussion?
I have comment about, about the, all of this. I think we've been, um, slaving over mixed use for, for many months. Um, I think the initial directive from City Council was to move through this really fast, and I think we realized it just can't be done. We tried to, uh, listen to, uh, as much public comment as, uh, as there was and, uh, take it into consideration. Some of it was focused on a certain area, and, and I think this recommendation addresses some of those concerns. I hope that City Council and the neighborhood would get behind the idea of having their own planning, uh, uh, committee and, and be able to actually take more control specifically over their neighborhood and not try to write ordinances that apply to everyone in the city when really we're focused on some specific areas. I think this is an outstanding idea, and we need to, hopefully, people will get behind it and want to, and want to press City Council to, um, provide whatever resources are necessary to accomplish this. It seems to me that that's, that's how we satisfy some of the, um, pro- complaints that, that we have heard, um, when we've been sitting up here.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think this would be great. My big concern is the time it's going to take. And I know we've said that before. And especially that it only addresses one area of the city, so I guess, I mean, how do we move forward from this one area? Is this kind of going to set, like, a system that you're going to use for other parts of the city then? Or is it kind of something that you think would be a basis for other ones? Because that's probably my, those are my two biggest concerns with it. I think it's great to come up with something a little, very specific to Lakewood, but it is just one little section.
Just to make one more comment, I said nine months to a year. You don't know until the issues come up, and sometimes it takes less, and sometimes it takes more to work through the issues. But, yeah, it, it is, it is a commitment. We had done a neighborhood, uh, planning process several years ago, and it takes resources to do, to do more than one neighborhood at a time, or more than one neighborhood in sequence.
And I would just add that since incorporation in nineteen sixty-nine, Lakewood has embraced a really, a great deal of variety in land uses in the various neighborhoods. And often, you know, we have this problem of one portion of the city not really understanding what the problems are in other parts of the city. Uh, so there, the uniformity of thinking is lacking too, but this is one solution to it. I know at one time, we had a planning document about this thick on Plan Lakewood. And, um, it's difficult to get away from that, really, when you consider the diversity of, uh, the city being superimposed on so many different types of developments.
Well, I, I think the recommendations we came up here go a long way to, uh, deal with the one part of the, uh, problem in that correcting some of the, uh, things that need to be corrected within the ordinance to, to get closer to what, um, all the citizens of Lakewood can be proud of. I think it's only part of the problem which, um, this last recommendation, um, deals with, I just can't see it all happening before most of the, uh, in, infill projects are going to be done, so... Any, any other?
Was there a second?
Oh.
Johan was...
Johan did?
Oh. No, I'm, I concluded my remarks, yeah.
Oh, you seconded the motion.
Oh, I, yes, I did.
We're ready to vote.
You looking for a third? Yeah, let's vote unless there's any other comment. Motion passes unanimously. So, that concludes...
Um, I had something I wanted to ask about that was kind of separate. Sorry. Um, you know, we've kind of talked about open space, but I don't think we ever actually changed anything in the table. And, um, one thing that I think should be addressed, I don't think we have, is if somebody builds a hundred percent residential in a mixed use, that open space should match what the mix, what the multifamily residential open space is.
So, you're talking about two different contexts here. So, the, the zoning is set up so that you have denser areas, like, uh, Belmar, like Union Corridor, and you step down density as you go out from these centers, right? Uh, Colfax, we have the light rail stations that have transit, that have higher density. The mixed-use areas are the center of that density. They're higher buildings, lower open space.
Sure.
The mixed-use, uh, the residential multifamily, that's a periphery zone. That's outs- that's, that's more of a neighborhood zone. And so, it's lower density, higher open space. So, there's a really different situations.
But if somebody, well, we've just changed that one, I think, but, so, if someone built a hundred percent residential in MCT, let's say a tran- transit zone, in an MRT zone, it would be a fifteen percent open space, and it's ten percent in MCT.
Right, and it, it doesn't matter whether it's residential or commercial. You can build a building and put office or residential in it.
The only reason I bring that up is that one of the things that we've heard is just that the open space provided by mixed use, when it's all residential, isn't enough for residents. It's just a complaint that I've heard. So, that was just something that I wanted to bring up. Even though it is supposed to be a more dense area, if you're providing a hundred percent residential, to me, it should have more open space.
Yeah, that's one of the things that should have had more discussion in this process, but, uh...
That's true, because there is a certain reliance on public space for op- publicly-owned space, for open space. And it's a question of should we actually induce more private, privately-owned open space or require it? And to what degree can we do that?
What would privately-owned open space look like? What are examples of that? A roof deck?
Courtyards, perhaps.
What? A roof deck?
Oh.
Yeah, courtyard. Courtyards, yards, overall. And, and in this con- in this part of the, and this is for discussion only, um, I'm surprised we didn't get more discussion about context, urban and suburban context. Because I think I was looking for some possible pushback on the increase of urban context. Not everybody likes the idea of building closer to the street, but we didn't hear much of that in terms of our, uh, dialogue, so I'll leave that out there. But I think that may come back in some form.
I, I agree, um, because I think, I think that concept works in certain places. I don't think it works very well on arterial streets, higher-speed streets. You know, you're, you're encouraging, uh, pedestrian traffic, right, up against, you know, high-speed, um, higher-speed, uh, streets. And I, I'm not sure that's a good idea, but that, yeah, that's something that, uh, I think warrants further discussion.
What are the steps for further discussion? In other...
Well...
We all agree about, uh, maybe we missed the open space issue. Can we do something about that, or what are those steps?
Well, if somebody wants to recommend that we look into some other issues, but I, you know...
We're starting to make the list for next year's annual update to the zoning code, so you could give us things to put on that list.
I don't know if I should bring this up now or general business, but, uh, I've been, uh, there, there's an agenda item in the next City Council meeting to form a development committee. Can you, uh, enlighten us at all about what that is? And, and specifically, have we been wasting our time up here?
No, I, I think the council has learned from some of their past interactions that it's hard for them to adjust language and make compromises in a hearing. And so, I think, my understanding is the intention of that committee is to hash out some differences and come to some sort of agreement on what the individual languages should be prior to going to a public hearing so that they can, you know, get, get all their considerations out on the table, have the discussions, and, and make the tweaks that they need. out on the table, have the discussions, and, and make the tweaks that they need to make in language, and then have one set of language before them when they, when they go to a hearing.
Wasn't that the point of a study session? I mean, when they made their study sessions, um, more like a regular meeting, it, didn't that sort of suddenly mean that they have to do this, this, rather than have study sessions where you look at these things and, and talk it over with everyone there instead of a subcommittee?
Yeah.
Because this will be a subcommittee, right?
This will be a subcommittee, yeah, five members, that's what they've said.
Five members.
Yeah, there'd be one from each ward.
One from each ward.
And is it public, open?
It'll have to be.
Committees are open?
It'll have to be, I don't know, though, if the public can participate, but just watch, I, I don't know.
I've, I've, I've heard that may, may, this might have other non-voting members that might include staff or, or other people.
Staff will certainly be involved, but yeah, certainly not voting.
I, I, though, just for my own understanding, this is what would normally happen at a, at a study session, right?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I, I think the part of the difficulty is, a study session now, as it's constituted by the council, has public comment, and has discussion on a, on camera, in front of the public, I think it's become just a, another sort of public hearing, and I think this is an opportunity to, for them to take a step back and do some work before they get up there and talk about it on the dais. Thank you.
I mean, I, I could see that, because sometimes, I mean, all we deal with is development issues, they deal with a lot of, a lot of other things, and, you know, I feel sometimes through the process, you know, we, we have, we have study sessions, we ask for things, we get them back, what we get back may or may not be what we were thinking we'd get back, and then, and then by the time we get the recommendation, um, we're not quite ready for exact wording, and, uh, part of that may be because we've tried to condense this process too much, but, uh-
I just think that this seems like a-
But-
-a study session with fewer members, and so it doesn't seem like it's-
Well, that's-
-accomplishing what would, we would normally-
I, I think, I think because study sessions at City Council now have, you know, most of the meetings taken up by public comment, they don't have time to discuss these things, which is why there's another step needed.
Yes, the question is, why did the meetings become, the study sessions become essentially additional meetings?
Have to ask City Council that.
They don't always make the right choice, maybe they need to go back.
Since council is waiting, you know, impatiently for my advice, I would-
As we are.
I thought they were more productive when they sat across a table from each other, but it did make public observation more complicated, because the room often wasn't big enough for people to sit there, but they really, rather than, uh, to sit up here and in this type of formality, and I think we have the same problem in some ways, that, um, we do better in, in these kind of study sessions if we're at a big table and looking at each other, where everybody has a clear view of each other, but the public, there, you know, the public likes to see what we're doing.
Well, I, I think we should encourage the public to see what's going on, so that they can make informed, uh, comments, either prior to the public hearing, well, hopefully prior to the public hearing, and then at the public hearing. That's the way it's supposed to work. It's kind of broken down a little. So, let's get off that subject, and, uh, if we want to discuss it further, we can discuss it on the general business. Uh, the next item, item four, approval of minutes of the March 21st Planning Commission regular meeting. Has everyone read those, and are we ready to vote, or does somebody have any corrections?
I think I had one hiccup, and has that been changed, or, yeah?
Nothing.
So, uh, are we ready to vote?
I will not be voting since I was not here.
So, all in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Eyes have it. General business. Does anybody have anything for general business?
I wonder if you heard about the availability and decided on a date for the retreat?
I haven't responded.
I haven't heard back from everybody yet, so it's looking maybe the 28th, but I still haven't heard it from everybody.
Who are you waiting to hear from yet?
Probably Rob, since he's out of the country.
Fitness on the spot.
I have a problem too, I've got a-
I'm currently available for either date, could change, I have a trip that's yet to be planned in September, October, but right now I'm available either day.
I think I am too.
I'm trying to get a date nailed down of a conference that I can't seem to assign a date to for some reason. Yeah.
Is there any other general business before we adjourn? Oh, we're adjourned.
Wait, it's way too early, what?
I know, what are we, maybe having Rob eating out here?